Good evening, welcome to the workshop meeting for July 22, 2019. We have agendas available on the corner desk over here by Mr. Gere. We also have them available through the city's website and a more detailed council packet. We also televise our meetings live on Charter Cable Channel 191 as well as broadcast them through Facebook Live in the city's website and those are of course available for review after the meeting. If you have any cell phones, I'd ask you to mute those so that the meeting isn't interrupted. And if you get a chance to speak with council, you'd come to the podium up here and if you share your name with us, we'd be thankful for a record-keeping. And with housekeeping taken care of, and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Alvarado.
Present.
Barajas.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Martinez.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Seven present, Mr. Mayor.
And if you'd join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Third item on the agenda is verbal reports from council members. Anybody attend an event or meeting that they wish to share with council? Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just reporting, went to the Greater Columbia Accountable Committee of Health meeting. They are getting ready for Phase Three, so they had Phase One, Phase Two, had each about 20 organizations that disimbursed a lot of funds to improve on healthcare in our communities from Yakima all the way down to Pullman. And so they're going in the next phase of that, and so just great things happening in that organization.
Thank you. I'll report attending a governance session with Ben Franklin Transit, Board of Directors, and also staff members, as well as, and I think, an incredible showing of stakeholders in the community about things that Transit could do better with from a governance perspective, from which when I'm one of the nine members on, and I think the product of it will be helpful as we've been making a transition from a smaller organization and as the Tri-Cities has gotten larger and it's changed the designation and become a fixture of our community, I think there'll be some follow-on things for us to tweak a bit as an organization. And want to thank actually Mr. Zabel for attending that day, as well as representatives from the other jurisdictions as stakeholders, and excellent session. Any other reports? Mr. Milne.
Yeah, on Tuesday, I attended the PFD meeting with our mayor, Pro Tem Maloney, and sorry, had to run here. It was a really good meeting, very informative. There's the next meeting, August 20th, here in the council chambers at four o'clock. We'll give a lot of more information from our consultant, and excuse me, and also the thing they're talking about is how to get the Aquatic Center on the ballot, so they're going next year. So there'll be more information in the next meeting, and then hopefully council will see something towards the end of the year. And then also on Friday, I did attend the presentation on the Apollo 11 moon landings at the CBC Planetarium, and it was very cool. It made me glad that I was an American and that we were the first on the moon. And then on Saturday, I did attend the crawdad boil at Osprey Point with the Pasco Chamber of Commerce, and a lot of really good food, and it was a good time, and there was actually a ton of people because they started running out of food. And then after that, I attended more food at the Sundown in Treetown for the Havana Cafe, and again, it was really good, and it was good to see the support, and a good time talking to Leo and telling him how the city Pasco is rooting for him, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mil. Great to see activities going on in our community. Any other reports? Hearing none, we're going to go on to Section Four of the agenda. First item is a presentation related to potential for Colima Sisterhood and progress report. Good to see you, Mr. Morales.
Good evening, Mayor Watkins, members of city council. I'm Michael Morales with the Department of Community and Economic Development, and I'm just here to follow up with you this evening on the progress of our sisterhood relationship development with the state of Colima, and report to you on what activities have been taking place in the community and some upcoming activities as well that we'll continue moving forward with. In March of 2019, as you recall, we had the Secretary of Economic Development and the Secretary of Social Development for the state of Colima had an initial advance visit to Pasco that was part of a multi-state trip when they were in the United States on, and we had quite a bit of engagement in the community on that, as a number of you went to the receptions that took place each of the evenings they were here, met with our economic development partners and our partners in education, some in health and Rotary International, as well as our downtown association. Following up on that in May, the Colima did send the executive chef Jennifer Arana of Casa de Arpiche in Guadalajara and Colima City, and participate in the Cinco de Mayo festivities during that week and kick off our chef's table dinner series at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen. I think those of you that attended had a really nice evening, and they were really a good opportunity to kind of show what we can do in the kitchen as well. And then in June, we held our first steering committee of the local, meeting of the local steering committee to establish a framework for exchange that was really well attended by about 25 people representing 21 organizations. There were probably about a dozen other folks and half a dozen other organizations that just weren't able to make it fit on the calendar but have expressed interest in continuing to be involved in the relationship. We met here at the Pasco Police Department Community Room, and what we did is identifying the different areas that we have been working toward, broke out into some work groups, took some additional ideas as well for future exchange. In the meantime as well, I've been working directly with the staff from the state of Colima in coordinating the development of a cooperation agreement, as well as identifying their areas of exchange they'd like to work on, and then try to coordinate a visit, advanced to visit delegation of our own down there later this year. So July, we again drafted the work plans for the committee. The first time that we're looking at going to Colima for this advanced delegation visit is this October, early in the month. I'm still waiting for confirmation from them of the exact dates, but I think the city manager has sent you all out a little heads-up on that so that you can start to make your plans accordingly with that proposed visit. I'm not sure how many of the different organizations from the work groups would go. Ideally, we could at least have one captain of each of the work groups attend, and that is for the purpose of establishing their connections for these projects moving forward so it's not all on city staff. As we remember when we first talked about sister-city relationships, they are citizen diplomacy at their heart, so making these agency-to-agency and business connections are really what keeps things going for the long-term. And then we are still talking about in January, February, they haven't set the dates yet for Subord Fest in Colima, but that is their big wine and culinary expo and entertainment expo in Colima, and they would like to work toward having a presence from Pasco there and a presence from our area wineries as well, and possibly a couple of our clients from the Pasco Specialty Kitchen who may be involved in some of that engagement. These are the organizations that were part of the first meeting. I don't want to have to list them all, but you can see they cover all of our government partners that we work with in the Create Group here that we meet in City Hall with, plus our regional economic development partners, our two main educational institutions, post-secondary with CBC and WSU Tri-Cities, the, all of the chambers of commerce, Pasco, Tri-City Hispanic, and the Tri-City Regional, and Spokane Teachers Credit Union has expressed an interest and has sent a delegate to participate in this, with us as part of their community engagement as well. The different areas and work groups that we're working on are education and STEM training, that is both at the K to 12 as well as post-secondary level, health, safety, and wellness, that will include community health, community safety with our public agencies, and wellness programs, economic development and trade, that involves the port of Pasco with us as well and trying to establish some opportunities with the port of Montecristo. Arts, culture, and culinary, this is always one that typically takes on a life of its own, and I think here we've had some really good connections made already, not just in the culinary end but also in arts, and so there's some performing arts opportunities for us as well. And then Rotary International, a couple of folks met with the Colima group when they were here, have some project ideas, they're taking on kind of their own life and they have their own processes for selecting the type of projects that they might invest in in Colima and vice versa. In terms of education STEM training, they're looking at enhancing their parent education center by implementing their curriculum in partnership with the Mexican consul, a PTA and Parent Advisory Council mentoring exchange, Spanish camp collaboration with their teachers' program that they currently have, another teacher, Spanish-English immersion exchange, quite likely in Colima, a student exchange program which may take place with Rotary but also be independent, as well as a STEM exchange with the Colima Technical University, and as you recall, that is a pretty well-established group down in Colima, and they're spinning off a lot of exciting things in the United States as well. In health, safety, and wellness, one area, an idea, is looking at solid waste disposal, surplus equipment, that could be everything from bins to possibly trucks in the future, that's a need in some of the developing areas in Colima and in Colima City. I know that we have a private provider of that service here, so we will need to develop that relationship with BDI, but it may also look at us from municipal end, seeing sometimes there's opportunities to acquire surplus equipment through our own exchange programs. Surplus police protect, personal protective gear, surplus firefighting equipment and supplies, and some joint training opportunities in law enforcement in the areas of de-escalation and social justice, and in both fire and police for cultural competency and fire and emergency medical response. And also, Calea is not just the United States, but there are a number of agencies in Mexico that have achieved accreditation or are working toward that, so Deputy Chief Roski is going to look into see where those opportunities are, and that might be a possible way for us to provide technical assistance, because as you heard back in March, they are embarking on some new law enforcement strategies in the state of Colima as well as in the city. In economic development and trade, of course, placement of our wines in the Colima market, controlled atmosphere, storage, and logistics. We want to engage our state trade commissions to look at more product exchange that could happen, and then food processing and related industries, and the import of Colima sea salt and produce. I think on food processing, you know, we, Mexico is probably one of also the biggest importers of our potato products that come out of the United States and the Pasco area as well. In arts, culture, and culinary field, we have performance of Pasco modern English classical works by Colima artists, an exchange of orchestra, symphony, conductors, or performers between the two, providing written scales from American classical works to Colima musicians, which is something that Bel Canto has offered to do. Culinary exchange, continue the relationship with chefs with the Pasco Specialty Kitchen and PSK clients to Colima for food exhibitions. We have an opportunity upcoming here for a pretty substantial grant to the PSK that I've been working on that would help to offset some of those opportunity costs for expansion of those programs. Also, participation in their Subord Fest, sorry, that's a misspelling, their Suborda, it's Subord Fest, and the Festival de Volcan, their volcano festival in May or June. Working toward exchange of art pieces for exhibition sales in Pasco and Colima, and commissioning an art piece to commemorate the Pasco-Colima relationship when that is established. We had a similar experience in Yakima where they commissioned a bust of Jose Morelos, the founder of the state of Michoacan, or one of the founders of the Mexican Revolution for Independence, and that was actually placed right in downtown Yakima. And also, the performing artist participation in Cinco de Mayo or other festivals in the future, and theater or cinema exchange. In terms of Rotary International, they have a longstanding relationship with the Colima City and State, which I didn't know when we began this process. They've made many sustainable investments in Colima, including vision clinics, medical equipment, health clinics, Project Amigo, which I don't know the details on Project Amigo, and adult education programs, and they're going to continue to build upon these relationships and explore new program ideas. In terms of when a delegation visits Colima, or in fact, anywhere internationally, there's a number of protocols that you can expect for us to put forward and prepare for the visit. This is based upon some experience with the Department of State and the InterAmerica Foundation when we would do some work for them in a prior time in my career. We will receive, research, analyze, and receive the most updated information regarding crime trends, centers of activity, in relation to our formal itinerary, any seismic volcanic activity in the region, which is always a concern because Colima does have a number of active volcanoes, severe weather, which can be the case on the Pacific coast, disease and other health alerts, as you've, you know, seen and heard and read about what's happened in the Dominican Republic and other places, you definitely want to be alert of anything emerging like that, any political activity that could be a distraction or create instability in any of the areas that we're going to visit, and restrictions on products either for air travel or entry into Mexico. Establish individual emergency instructions, that'll be very important for everybody. Establish local travel protocols and instructions for the group itinerary, some of that has to do with, you know, when we go a certain place, if not everybody's going to be there, who's really going to be the point person, who will kind of be the main recipient of whatever exchange we have, and notify our nearest consulate and Department of State of our travel plans and all who are going to be involved. And most importantly, I think with anything that you've heard, is sticking to the itinerary and travel pre-arranged by the Colima government. They're very aware of not only our concerns, but in general in their community, what they need to do to provide an enjoyable experience for everybody, and they're going to work really hard on that. We will probably, or most likely, fly into Guadalajara as a group and travel into Colima as a group, understanding that some may have a longer trip than others, so we will at least work to group any earlier returns back together so we don't have individuals having to travel and make their own arrangements. We certainly want to make sure, and our hosts want to make sure, that they are, you know, taking everybody from start to finish and getting you sent off back home safely. So with that, one thing I also didn't mention on here is that we do have a draft cooperation agreement that we've been working on. It is a non-legally binding document, it really just spells out what are the areas you want to explore, what are the options for us at some point in time should we decide this really isn't working for us and parting ways, and also identify who our partner agencies will be, and it's just part of protocol that this ends up being mainly government-to-government. I believe until the time we actually have a formal organization formed that will have its own chairperson, executive committee, and fundraising apparatus, then they will do more of the interaction and plan different, smaller group trips, I think, as different exchanges start to evolve. So with that, I will open up to any questions or comments or concerns.
Wow, a lot of, a lot of progress and details on, since we've talked about it last. I appreciate that, Mr. Morales, discussion on this item. Mr. Martin, or Mr. Serrano there, Mr. Martinez?
All right, thank you. All right, three weeks of questions built up. You're going to suffer. No, just kidding. First thing, you've mentioned STEM exchange with Colima Tech University. Have you been working both CBC and WSU Tri-Cities, or what would the plan be there?
Yeah, they are, they are working up, so each of the groups, because I can kind of be a jack-of-all-trades with master of none, so that was the point of having the work groups get into the details of what they want to do, and both the chancellor of Wazoo Tri-Cities and the president of CBC, as well as superintendent of our school district, have all indicated their interest in that directly to me, and have sent, I believe, their best people to help put those programs together.
Excellent, excellent, and this is probably more city manager-type question. You mentioned surplus equipment, and I recall we talked about surplusing some equipment, I don't know, a month and a half, two months ago. How often is it that we're unable to, one of the options was like to sell it at Fair Market or on some type of website. I recall, I believe that one of our options was to essentially gift it to other municipalities or give it a downgraded price. Is there an option within the code to surplus it and then, you know, kind of grant it to an agency like this, an international exchange?
You know, depends on the piece of equipment, but one of the more common ones is our fire engines, which cost a small fortune, actually a large fortune nowadays, new, and once you've used them past their useful life, they're worth very little. And so that's, that's one of the more common pieces of equipment that you find in these kind of exchanges.
Okay, cool. No, it's a good idea, just kind of know what we're noodling on here. I think that, I think I had another question, but we'll leave it for now. Thank you.
If I could follow up on the equipment part of it in my discussions with Deputy Chief Roski, you know, we do have the opportunity here because there's a lot of other regional agencies to collaborate on those things, and, you know, you don't find local governments in the United States passing around use Kevlar best very often, that's another example there, but that will be easier to accomplish once this gets formalized and there's an authorization for them to do that and talk with these agencies.
And I think your point too on Kevlar specifically, I know that county commissioner, formerly state senator Jerome Delvins, formerly Richland Police, was often talking about spare Kevlar going off to Peru in his case because there was an exchange relationship there, so that's, I would think, probably a more tangible example of some of the police and our fire equipment. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm hoping I'm, just been trying to articulate how I'm going to ask this question or how I'm going to present this concern, but I just want to ease the community to ensure that, I mean, this is wonderful what's going on here in this relationship and all the things that we can learn and they can learn, and the benefits of all this from a business standpoint, and education, and everything you've presented here tonight, I think it's wonderful. But again, you know, I think one of the early concerns of the community was, you know, the safety, and also I think one of the concerns was, you know, is just promoting, bringing more people over here from there in some, you know, however they get here or not. But that's not, that's not the whole purpose of this, this is, I just want to reiterate and make sure that we're open in our communication to the community, that, you know, these things are, are wonderful things based on, you know, and taking all the precautions necessary to do what we have to do, not what we have to do, but do what, all these good things to promote business and to promote our communities, and, and just, with the word, to be open to the community.
Transparent.
Transparent. That this, you know, this is a relationship that we have, us here, them there, and what we have to share with one another, it isn't so much bringing people here and perhaps people being uneased about bringing something here that's, that's not safe for our community, that's not the point. As you can see in these presentations, these are very productive activities, and I think we can enrich our lives and their lives by these things that we're doing here. It's been, in Yakima, a very successful thing with Monte Morelos, and I just wanted to communicate that to the community and make sure we're as transparent as we can be in this process, so, so we don't have the community come and say, well, we never knew anything, where did this come from, type thing, you know. So anyway, just wanted to make that point. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Morales, for what seems like a heck of a lot of work between, when we last spoke about this. So I only have, only one question. So as, as part of this, at some point in time, council has some action to take, I assume, but I guess, when along in our agenda, or is it something for the council to, to take up a vote specifically supporting this? I don't believe we've done so at this point in time, so I'm kind of trying to understand where the timeline would be.
So I think we've had the general consensus to continue going forward and exploring, and I think a vote on the matter will be with the cooperation agreement, and the plan is to, after the advanced delegation visit, that we would bring that back to the council, you know, sometime late October, early November, to get that ratified by the council. And again, you know, it's, it's language that can put us, it's more of a ceremonial issue, and so, you know, how we construct something that the mayor could sign on behalf of the city, mayor to mayor, because that's how they like to do things, understanding that we have direction, you know, our staff has direction to explore these different areas, and so when things come up in the future where you're authorizing donations of surplus or things like that, it folds back into the cooperation agreement. There may be separate agreements between Colima Tech and CBC or WSU that we don't need to be a party of as well, and, but we will always keep the council abreast of those issues as they arise.
Excellent, thank you. Yeah, I want to, I certainly want to continue to explore this, I think it's an interesting opportunity, and, you know, when we, one thing's, when we're down in Denver for the All-America Cities, there's, there's a lot of talk about equity and equity and opportunity, and often I think our economic development tends to focus on, on other directions in terms of bringing in bigger businesses and such, and I think this is an excellent opportunity to potentially explore a different avenue and bring in, and help, help all of our, our people in Pasco expand their business opportunities, so, awesome, thank you.
And I think the participation of those other groups kind of shows you that there is an interest in that equity as well, and, and building that, those relationships. Everybody wants to do better in their community engagement, this is one way to do it. You know, we had all those organizations listed there, I didn't list the people involved with them, but they're people that you would know them all pretty much, and that they're all very busy people, and so that they've been given the latitude to work on this as well, I think is a good sign for everybody.
Mr. Alvarado?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have more of a comment rather than a question. More than anything, I remember where this was an idea, some of the Somos Pasco meetings and how this, we talked about this two years ago when we went to Denver, and Somos Pasco was one of the, the projects that was being highlighted, and to see now that there is a large number of community support around this with some specific work groups that are, have some very great ideas, to have an exchange of art, of resources, I mean, I really commend this work group for really taking, taking this seriously, and so if anything, I just want to express my support for this.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. Ms. Barajas?
And I too, like Mr. Alvarado, thank you, Mayor, would like to just say that this is a great presentation, more information definitely than in comparison to when I first had so many questions. I appreciate the efforts into providing more. Just really making that comment, appreciate the presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas, Mr. Serrano?
Thank you. If I recall correctly, when we first talked about this, we were talking about essentially shared funding, not so much with the city of Colima, but kind of our partners within the city of Pasco. Is that still the intent, is that, how are we going to carry that through?
So ideally, of course, all the different partner organizations here will handle their own costs in terms of what they're going to provide in travel and any exchange that goes forward. The second piece of that that helps either to support some efforts that may not have an organization with deep pockets behind them, or that sponsors, individuals for some of these programs coming in is really about corporate fundraising and development. And so I think that, you know, for example, the, the PSK and the Downtown Association, they don't have very deep pockets, and so with some other technical assistance and capacity-building money that they may receive in the near future, that could help to develop those programs with the aim of the, kind of expanding the capacity of, of their clients. So the, the steps as we go forward is, once we've all made the decision collectively, one that the city wants to have this cooperation agreement, that the organizations represented here are going to continue with that, once that's established, then this nonprofit corporation or membership organization will need to be formed and incorporated, and obviously we provide some technical assistance in that standpoint. And then it's really a matter of, you know, connecting people to resources and figuring out who are the best corporate partners to be involved in, who has the most interest. Obviously, from the trade, economic development standpoint, people who are going to benefit from this, we're going to expect to be a part of that fundraising. So we're not talking about a, you know, if anything is going to see a bump, it's going to be now planning for annual or every of the year delegation visits to accommodate some of our own either staff and elected officials to go.
I appreciate that. You also mentioned technical assistance. Do you know if we're ahead of the curve where we could be seeking grant funding for any of this stuff on the front end, or is it going to be, once the corporation, the nonprofit corporation is formed, or maybe PSK can obtain some? Can you speak to any of that?
Yeah, I think that as opportunities arise that fund these kind of activities, then either as a local government or some of these other agencies as a nonprofit will be able to step in and apply for that, and, and again, that'll be the same thing. Initially, it's really going to be about relationships and getting folks to give us that initial investment to get going.
Thank you.
Mr. Mil?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And just also more of a comment, I did, as the international chair for Sunrise Rotary, we did have a discussion of this with our board meeting about Colima, and then also last week I had another meeting with the multi-club, which composes Walla Walla, Richland, Kennewick, and of course Pasco, and they're talking about also doing more of a bigger project with Colima, so if there's any way that you could have city staff or somebody reach out to me, it's the contact that I need to do, because they did want to do something to show that they were excited about what we're doing with Pasco, and they're asking to, to get together and do something. I know I did talk to the delegation, but if I get a little more information, so I could coordinate that with the, the different eight Rotary Clubs and do something bigger, so I appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, we'd be happy to, you know, go make any presentations and discuss things with some of these civic groups, and that reminds me of one point that I wanted to make sure you understand is that we've also established our protocols between the Colima government and Pasco for the time being, while we're putting all this together so that we don't have a lot of different broken arrows flying around and aren't able to coordinate, because when you do that, then you, something falls through the cracks and you aren't able to put your best foot forward in either case. So all of the, I will be the local conduit of information in dealing with things coming from the government of Colima, and then I will work directly with whatever work group, captain and work group that we need to get something going, and, and let them know as they can make those connections that, you know, keep me CC'd on things so that I can continue to note that. My counterpart in Colima has established a Gantt chart so we can track all of these different initiatives and where their progress, and set some time benchmarks for us to hit, and so we can kind of hold each other accountable to moving forward.
So I'm going to summarize what I've been hearing because I think that this is a little bit of a different tone of a discussion that we've had, and I want to thank you and the work group especially to illustrate a bunch of specific details that add up to what I think is a, also a fair agenda to explore this relationship further, and then also to ask the question if we want to formalize it, and I appreciate, and I think, I think that you're laying out the sum of the work that's been done the past couple of months, a little bit more work that needs to be done is pointing towards paying a visit back to Colima when they paid a visit to us, and, and, and I'm hearing consensus that we should be able to at least go to that point, and then the follow-on, I think you've pointed out, is that we then probably have a, assuming everything went well, we'd have a discussion in November about formalizing this relationship, and then follow-on activity. activities in 2020. Is that kind of a real short summary of of what you're saying?
Yes. You're probably expecting me back here in, uh, late September, just as we get ready for a trip or mid-September to say, okay, here's where we're at, here's what everybody needs to have, and and make sure we have all those instructions laid out. So the public also knows what we're going to be doing down there in terms of our itinerary.
And it's, and would, and also in form of transparency, would expect then that Pasco will be expending some funds, because we're gonna have to travel to Colima. And that's reasonable. Pasco has a long history of 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 of, uh, not, uh, spending too much on things, uh, will, and I'm sure will will do that in this case. Uh, and so I would, I would, uh, with council consensus, move forward, uh, with that, so we can, we can progress down this suggested schedule and and, uh, maybe have a sister sitting. See some nods? Appreciate that. Appreciate the discussion. Uh, appreciate your your efforts. And again, look forward to the the next update. And, uh, frankly, October's not too far away in the whole scheme of things. Thank you, Mr. Morales.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Great discussion. Uh, we're gonna move on to the next item, and that's related to a service agreement with TRIDEC. Mr. White, we do this periodically with TRIDEC check-in and staff, I already know staff are recommending continuing on.
We, we do, we do. Uh, the last time, though, was 2015. And so the, uh, four-year agreement, which is kind of an odd number, expired at the end of 2018. And so the renewal of the gr-, uh, agreement between TRIDEC and the city, uh, is, um, hoped by staff that council receives it favorably. As as noted in the agenda report, the cities are collectively involved with the direction and, uh, agency actions as they have a seat on the board. Uh, and we would be hard-pressed to provide the kind of industrial recruitment and economic development services for the $30,000 annual fee that TRIDEC provides. So with council consensus, we will, uh, bring this back for decision point next council meeting.
And I think we're gonna get that. I see some nods. And, uh, just to augment too, that, uh, 30K per jurisdiction is not TRIDEC's entire budget. They do get some funds from, I believe, the federal government. So this is a relatively small buy-in to a larger, uh, uh, pool of of resources, uh, as as far as our portion of it. Uh, Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. White, um, you you indicated that this agreement had a, has already expired. And I assume it expired with the other municipalities as well? Is that your understanding?
Uh, I think it did, but not for the length of time that we've been out of agreement. It was kind of an oversight, I think, with staff transition. But, uh, they've continued to provide services and it's just simply a matter of, uh, making sure council is, uh, in agreement before we sign ink the next five-year deal.
So we're not hearing anything from the other, um, municipalities that they're have, they're having any issues?
No.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Alvarado.
Just a question out of curiosity. Uh, I mean, I I know this is a very beneficial, uh, relationship that, um, TRIDEC, uh, provides for as a, as a service. And, um, and so in in me just trying to, um, this is probably one, an area that I don't know as much about. Um, but I know that they had to play a, a, a role in bringing in the Autozone and things like that. I think it'd be pretty, uh, helpful, I think, at least to me, to kind of see what is, what some of those, um, how how that's, uh, I know it's a great benefit, so, but like to be able to point to some of those in our report to say, um, because of this relationship, we've been able to see some great, um, businesses come in, or we we have partnered to. I I think just, um, obviously, um, I'm in favor of this and, uh, but just, just out of more of a, uh, being able to point to some great victories.
Right. But perhaps I might help here. It's, it's been a bit of time since Mr. Adrian has been to the Pasco to report. Perhaps it'd be a good opportunity to invite him, uh, in a way like the visitor convention bureau does an annual report. Uh, does any of the new, do any of the new council members remember Mr. Adrian coming the past couple of years?
He's been here for.
His one?
Rivers.
Okay.
I don't know specifically.
Okay. Per- perhaps that or other thoughts, Mr. White?
Yep.
Okay.
Try to arrange that.
Okay. So, well, we'll, uh, we'll put on the agenda to renew and, uh, and invite also Mr. Adrian, uh, if he'd like to come talk with council one evening. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on on the agenda. And that's, next item is Broadmoor Area Non-Project EIS. A mouthful, but a lot of acronym for a lot of good stuff. And, oh, this is gonna be a substantial thing. So Mr. White's coming to the podium. So, uh, tell us about environmental impact statements, sir.
Yeah, well, it's not gonna be that, that substantial. It's just a status update for council. The, the city's been working, uh, with a consulting group on the Broadmoor, um, EIS. And, uh, as council is well aware, the Broadmoor area is, um, kind of the ace up our sleeve of economic development. It's a roughly a 16 to 1800 acre, depending on who you're talking to, acre area strategically placed right in the bull's eye of the tri-cities. If you threw a dart and hit the bull's eye, you'd hit Broadmoor. Uh, we've, um, been working for some time now, seriously working with the majority property owner in the area on marketing and accomplishing, uh, utility extension agreements and a number of other, a number of other issues. But the, um, EIS process itself involves an area that's never been built upon. So there's, there's quite a bit of analysis to perform. And we've been undergoing that for roughly the last year now. Of course, the non-project EIS, it doesn't, there isn't a specific project, but there is a range of land uses and, uh, policies that would apply no matter what the alternatives are. So it will try, the EIS will try to assess the potential impacts of those land use changes. And hopefully, if it's done correctly, it will minimize further review of individual site-specific projects. Because if they conform with the master plan, then they will be analyzed already through the EIS. So that significantly lengthens the, uh, review time for site-specific projects. And it also provides certainty to the development community, which is very important in their eyes. Uh, we have, uh, essentially three alternatives. Uh, the coordinated high-density development, which is the preferred alternative. There is a much lesser dense, but still more dense than what's existing, moderate-density alternative. And then, of course, the last alternative is, is the no-action alternative. So that would be based on our current comprehensive plan designations for this area. The coordinated, uh, high-density development, um, and you've seen this map before, and I think several presentations now, but, um, it has, uh, obviously a strong, if I can find, a strong regional commercial component. It has a very strong mixed-use component in all the residential zones. And it even allows, or is proposed to allow at least, a residential component in some of the commercial zoning districts as well, more along the lines of townhomes and multifamily-style developments. Uh, the natural environment, yes, sir?
Okay, good question. So on the, the high-density and the mid-density, does that change, like, how the roads are gonna be? I mean, obviously, if you have high-density, you're obviously gonna have a lot more people with, like, compartments. Would this, you see what I'm getting at? As far as would the roads be, I mean, are we gonna have bigger roads if we go with high-density, or is it gonna be the same if we go with the medium-density?
Uh, no, the the road network will be the same. But the, uh, capacity of the road may be different depending on, on what the density ends up being. And I'll get to the transportation piece in in just a moment, 'cause that's a very, very important part and was, uh, actually the subject of the last 10 weeks' worth of environmental, or excuse me, consultant and analysis. So we'll get to that. Uh, I'll just go over these very quickly. But the, uh, a, a natural environment, again, you have a, uh, an environment that's never been built upon. So we have erosion, the stormwater, groundwater, and wildlife habitats is, uh, the main focus of the analysis of the, uh, natural environment. And most of these mitigation measures, again, the EIS is not yet done, but the mitigation measures are going to be roughly the same for each of the alternatives, because candidly, there's not gonna be a lot of difference on the effect of the built environment. And they focus on what I would call best management practices. So erosion and stormwater, you you, uh, suspend particulate creation by watering your construction sites. Groundwater, you use infiltration trenches rather than developing an expensive stormwater network. Wildlife habitats is a big one. If we go back to the land use map, you'll see the, uh, area roughly in the center of the site. This, uh, roughly coincides with the wooded area that's just south of Burns Road that sometimes has trespassing, uh, irrigation water in it. But it's also terrain such that it lends itself not only for, uh, groundwater disposal, infiltration, but also as a open space and, um, uh, area for, uh, wildlife. Uh, the affected environment, of course, will be soils, air, water. And I see wildlife and habitat listed again. Uh, air is focusing on particulate, uh, creation. Water on provision of potable water from the city. And then soils, uh, is a bit of a challenge. As, as you know, the area has, uh, soils that are not, are are very temporary. And they blow around. And if not correctly built upon, uh, they will provide problems for structures. So there's an analysis of engineering practices contained in the EIS as a mitigation measure to use for, uh, mitigating some of those, uh, hazards associated with the soil types in the area. The draft EIS focuses on noise, land and shoreline use, and the provision of public utilities and services. Uh, most notably, the public services analyzed will be all the, all the services provided by utility companies, electricity, uh, pow, uh, gas, and schools, and park, and recreation, and fire facilities. Because the area is outside our, um, timed service area, and will need to have accommodation measures to provide the kinds of protection the council has established as a policy. Traffic, the big one. Um, the, um, Metropolitan Planning Organization, the council of governments, is, uh, the, uh, planning and transportation clearinghouse for transportation projects in this area. The model that the COG uses did not have, they had the existing Broadmoor land uses in our comprehensive plan, roughly 1,000 dwelling units or so, based on the land use designations as they now exist. If our preferred alternative has roughly between eight and 8,300 dwelling units, that's a, a large increase, uh, of almost 60,000 total vehicle trips. And and there's some nuances with that number, but total vehicle trips, not necessarily peak hour trips, but but total trips. Um, the good news is, though, is that the vehicle miles traveled because of the mix of land uses in the area decreases, which is, and they decreased by a, a big number, um, by six, uh, roughly 16%. Typically, you might expect 2% to 3% decrease based on capacity, for example. Um, but they increased almost 16%. And, uh, that's, uh, at least a relief to me, because while the traffic analysis was being prepared, remember, 10 weeks' worth of traffic engineering work, um, the, uh, my, my, my real concern was the impact on the state system. So this is really, really good news. The traffic impacts are not expected to be as, um, hideous as as we would have thought, based on the number, the difference in the units. That's almost 7,000 unit difference. And again, i- if you can remember the discussion we had, uh, a little bit earlier this year about our potential urban growth boundary area expansion, uh, Broadmoor is expected to take roughly 10 years' worth of growth, just in that first 10-year shot at this. So it it's a very important component. Um, and traffic, of course, is one of the biggest, uh, biggest components. Um, when council, uh, when the draft DIIS is, uh, released and council will be able to take a look at it, you'll also see that there is an important component that is using, uh, Ben Franklin Transit as a resource to minimize trips in that area. They're very interested in providing a regional park-and-ride lot in the area.
Mr. White, a quick question about, um, as it pertains to, uh, the reduction of VMTs. Is that based on a, um, accepted, uh, uh, concept, uh, but in in the transportation community? Or is that, uh, based on, um, similar to developed land, land uses? Uh, how, how do we align at that?
It's based on the, the mix of land uses. And, uh, the, uh, again, if you look, if you think about our existing comprehensive plan designation, there's a hunk of commercial and then low-density. But that chunk of commercial property doesn't provide many jobs. The, uh, the mix of land uses provides about 2,000 more jobs than would be expected, just based on the existing designations. So if you don't, if you don't have to cross the bridge to go to work in this area, that's a decrease in expected vehicle miles traveled.
Right. And and I, uh, understand as a concept that, and I've seen in certain, uh, cities where that's the, that's the idea, but the folks who end up working at these, uh, at these places end up commuting other places, perhaps because it's a disparate, um, the, perhaps it's service industry, but they, those who work in the service industry do not, cannot afford to live in these lofts or whatever.
Oh.
And so I've seen, I've seen, uh, some of that. And so, uh, I I think that would be, uh, a concern. I mean, I'm very in, in favor of the, of this kind of development and concept. And by, uh, being able to, you know, provide for this, uh, opportunity rather than just, you know, regu- a regular pattern of development. But, um, I I, I guess that would be one way that I I would love to see if there's a, a, a way that, uh, this formula has been proven or has been, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly. Well, we're, we're having a conference call with the traffic engineering firm a week from tonight, Monday. Um, and then, um, we'll meet with our consultants again on Tuesday. So we'll be able to provide the analysis that, uh, the consulting firm used for the transportation, uh, piece. And we can certainly fold that in, actually be part of the draft EIS.
Thank you. Mr. White, so I know obviously Sandifer's the bigger lanes. What about the secondary lanes? Are they two-lane roads or are they four-lane roads? It's kind of hard to tell.
Well, I don't, I don't know for sure how the, the lanes of each specific road. Um, but they'll be sized appropriately. The ones that you see on the, the ones you see on the, uh, sketch are going to be either major or minor arterials.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate it. Since we're talking traffic, um, have we looked at the need to connect with the the federal system, uh, doing anything with the, the on-ramp and off-ramp there?
Uh, there will be need for on and off-ramp improvements.
And at what point do you think, um, once this EIS, assuming we adopt it as is or whatever the case is, at what point would we then start putting resources into doing that, whether it's an additional study for that particular portion of the roadway or?
Mm-hmm. Well, that, that would be part of our existing process where you, you know, plan for capital improvements.
Right. So we, I'm trying to think. I don't recall having a line item for the highway. Maybe I'm wrong there. And we don't have to get stuck on this point. But I guess, once we move forward with the EIS, assuming we adopt it, we may wanna reconsider the CIP to include some budgetary, uh, lines for the, the highway.
Yeah, there, there, there will be time for that. And, uh, when the analysis is complete, the detailed analysis, we'll be able to present the, the firm's findings. And then it's simply a matter of council policy on how and when those get funded.
Thank you.
And and just to augment too, I think a couple of things, and Mr. Serrano kind of hit, hit point. As a practical example, I remember, uh, it's been 10-plus years ago, we added a traffic loop, uh, to the highway, uh, with the existing traffic. And I'd have, and we were talking about two, but there was not, the state or the feds wouldn't go with you. It wasn't need yet. So I'd imagine this kind of development would trip easily if there need be for a track, a second traffic loop. So specifically, would a second traffic loop, and back then it was 1.2 million dollars. So presuming even it's that amount and not changed, would the million dollars be anticipated as part of this process, uh, before such a thing is actually approved?
Well, I hope not. Uh, because the, one of the, um, one of the concerns that we expressed to our consulting engineering group was that they present the findings of their analysis that doesn't flood Washdott with a million giant capital concerns right now. Because remember, this is not gonna all happen at once.
Right.
It it is going to be incremental. And we'll have the ability to, hopefully, provide our own, uh, portion of funds for the expensive things and use the grant system and our existing, uh, opportunities to help with those expensive improvements on the state and federal system.
Well, I'm gonna ask it again, because the concern is that you approve then this project on the assumption that you're gonna receive grants. And then what happens if the grants, uh, don't happen? I gue- I think there, you've heard, uh, I think, a bunch of concern by this council and past councils, that as we do traffic, there needs to be a little bit of more confidence in that traffic measures will be taken and when they are needed and not reactively, when and when they are needed and not reactively, when they've been needed for a long time. And maybe that's, Mr. Zabel, you have a, you have a thought?
I would just remind council of our concurrency requirements.
Concurrent.
Maybe that's where.
And if there is, if there's expectation of concurrency requirements, those have usually been, I think, very helpful and have been a great tool. So is, if that, if that's going to potentially be true in this case.
Well, right. And if, if, remember, when concurrency is based on level of service, and if a project decreases level of service below our adopted standard, then it's on them to do something.
Well, and I guess then I'm still concerned because our level of service standards we adopted are D, if I remember right.
D.
D, and I certainly have a concern with, that's, people can wait two traffic lights. And that's, even though that's the adopted standard, the majority of the public does not believe or support that. And nor do we typically get down to that level. So, so I would renew this potential conversation about whether or not D is an appropriate standard with this potentially large project. So kind of a, kind of a, that might be something we need, we should or need to talk about.
Well, the opportunity will be presenting itself shortly with the comprehensive plan cycle. So that's, that's where they're adopted.
And I guess I'm asking council too, you remember, does anybody, when I talk level of service, D standards or B or A? Or is this something familiar with everybody? Mr. Alvarado, I know, okay.
I recall a comment that we did believe D is passing in school and shouldn't be in our city.
Yeah, so, so.
We also recognize there's a need.
We also recognize the need for budget and you have to have trade-offs. And D is appropriate in certain instances. I recall that being the conversation. Some places it is acceptable and some places we really need to target something higher, especially as we continue to market the growth of the city and looking towards providing services for those who reside here in addition to those who are coming.
I think we just, as a body, need to be sensitive to the standards we've adopted. Thank you, Mr. White.
What's left to do? Well, we have some more detailed traffic analysis to hear from our consulting firm, DKS and Associates. But once we get that, and that's expected to happen about the mid-portion of August, we will have probably another week for the assembly of the draft EIS, and then we'll refer it out to the public. There'll be a 30-day comment period. We can go 45 days and extra 15 days if necessary, and for something like this, we might want to very well consider that. Once the comment period is over, we'll assemble the comments and respond, and that's part of the final EIS. And then the squared bulleted items are what's left to do still on the master plan. So we still have design guidelines and the regulatory framework. And then once council's given the master plan document after your adoption of whatever alternative that is, we'll incorporate that into our comprehensive plan so that it's coordinated with our other timeframe by the end of the year to get our comprehensive plan done.
Other discussion? Mr. Serrano.
Thank you. Do we have any lessons learned from our friends across the river that are doing this to field? Because it seems like, you know, at least size-wise and kind of, but conceptually, we're talking close to apples to apples.
We do, you know, we talked a little bit about this at a couple of marketing opportunities at the recon in Las Vegas. Their site is very small. It's only a little more than 100 acres. And they, they don't really have any of the transportation challenges we do. And they, I don't know how to put this, but their site is challenged just, just in general, just because of the amount of development in and around it. And so, nothing comes to mind offhand.
No, I appreciate that clarification because my impression was that it was closer to 500 to 700.
Yeah, it's actually quite small.
Okay, well, no, that's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarado.
Yeah, just a question about timeline. Let's say, I'm assuming that the three alternatives will have various timelines? Or would you, would you say that it's be about the same amount of process because it's all?
Oh, yeah, the process will be the same. I think the real, the real problem, not a problem, but the real challenge is getting to council those design guidelines and regulatory framework. Because we're going to have, we need to, once the EIS is done, we'll want to get the preferred alternative into the comprehensive plan as soon as we can. And maybe luckily, there's still a little bit of lag between the provision of utilities and the time that the master plan will be adopted. So we're, we're in luck in that regard.
We're looking at a couple of years soon, it's completed, the environmental impact study?
Oh, no, it'll, it'll, it should be done by the end of, mid-portion of August.
Mid-August, okay.
Yeah, and but then there's that comment period.
Right.
And then there's the adoption of the master plan. So that'll take it probably to mid-fall, let's say, just in time to go into our comprehensive plan process.
Wow, so do I put that context too? So we're talking this summer and this fall and into maybe the winter where we're seeing something tangible and specific with this significant chunk of Pasco. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. White, for bringing out the laboratory on this. When I was reading through the presentation, it's like, man, this is really bare bones. But obviously, you've got the wealth of knowledge to help explain to us what the heck's going on here. So back on the proposed land use map, I just want to make sure I understand correctly. So we have the different zones there. Are those, are those intended to be new zones within our comp plan? Are those going to be translated into existing zoning?
The land use designations will be new to our comprehensive plan, and we'll probably title it Broadmoor Something or Other. And then that, that last slide, the regulatory framework, will be establishing the specific zoning that will take place under these overall land use designations.
So this is going to be a little different than we've done in any other part of the city at this point?
Well, it's not different. The names are different, but it's the same process. For example, now in our comprehensive plan, we have a low-density designation. And within that, I think there are four different zoning densities that you can use in that overall low-density zoning designation. The commercial designation in our comprehensive plan has three zoning districts.
No, I'm sorry, I understood that. And so, so I was just trying to say, so the land use designations there are listed in that little table. Those will be new additions to our, in terms of options for zoning in our city? Okay. The other question I had was, obviously, we have some, north of Burns Road there, we have some low-density residential. That's stuff that's being currently developed, if I understand correctly. Is there, so we're really only applying this EIS to south of Burns Road? And north of Burns Road is existing, so if we're not, we're not suggesting a change to anything up north of Burns?
No, we're not. As a matter of fact, Burns Road is, north of Burns Road, with the exception of this piece roughly here, is, is pretty much built out. This is now a subdivision. This is owned by the school district. This is already zoned. I can't remember what it's zoned. I think it's zoned RS 10, which is 10,000 square foot lots. The high-density zoning is already existing here on this corner. But the analysis, this total unit count does take into play these land uses north of Burns Road.
Okay, so this will, this will include the impact of those residences and how that'll affect the traffic patterns, the ecology, et cetera?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Alvarado.
Last one, sorry.
Sure.
Is there, has been, there've been, obviously, this is still early in the process, but has there been any conversation with the school district as far as if we're wanting to reduce VMTs and things of that nature? Has there been any, any conversation with them about reducing the trips that children would take to school as well by, you know, allowing, allowing some of that? I know that's a little bit more.
Yeah, not specifically that. And it's, I think it's also important to note that this, this is an 80-acre site here. I, I'm a victim of this as well. I assume that that's going to be the high school site. That, that isn't necessarily a guarantee. It, it's owned by the school district, but it might not end up being a high school site. And they're doing a little bit of advanced planning on their own. As a matter of fact, our senior planner, Jacob Gonzalez, is attending several meetings with the school district as they kind of sift through where the city's going. They're, they're looking at our urban boundaries, and they're taking a hard look at their processes to purchase property for future schools.
I think that's what I was fishing for, and you know, just that there is some, that they know that this is what we're planning, at the very least. So that's more where I was going.
Well, we appreciate the update on this non-specific EIS, non-project-specific EIS. And I think we also, the depth of questions are getting to see that this is a little bit of a new, but tangible, specific thing that Pasco's trying to do in a special opportunity and smack dab in the middle of the tri-cities. And this has genuine potential to be a real diamond for the tri-cities. And, and, and has a little twist on it instead of the way we've been doing it for the past 20 or 30 years. So so far, I think we like what we see and we look forward to see the results of the EIS and where to go from there.
Yep, you bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. With that, we go on to section five on the agenda, miscellaneous discussion, starting with Mr. Zabel.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I did have five items tonight, and I'll start off with something exciting and finish with something exciting. So July 29th is one of our rare fifth Mondays. So I don't have any idea what we'd have a special meeting for, so we all get next Monday night off.
Yoo-hoo.
Yeah, that's good news. Secondly, whenever you mess with somebody's environment, you want to tell them about it before you do it. So you're all getting new microphones this week. Ones we have now are about 10 years old, really not supportable any longer. We can't get parts for them, things like that, but, so we're cannibalizing. But should have a little more functionality, particularly for the chair microphone. And then to keep our, keep the issue on the radar, just wanted to let council know we continue our work with the Complete Count Committee for the all-important 2020 census. The official census protocol was received about 10 days ago, and that work will continue on through next year. So we'll keep council updated as we go along. And then I did have another item, and I learned about it earlier today. Most of, most of the council, if not all of you, received a letter from Rodney Costin, who's the chairman of the Confederated Tribes of the Colville Reservation. And he invited the council members to two separate events later this week. And from my perspective, this, this seems really encouraging, given their recent investment in property in the city. And it's pretty clear they want to establish a relationship with the city through the council, which is, I think, a really wonderful sign for Pasco. Having worked with tribal governments and other agencies, one of the hitches we have as a city in working with the tribal council, because they don't fall under Open Public Meetings Act and some of the things that, that a city or a Washington, Washington State municipality does, is we need to kind of approach things a little bit different with them. And the idea of a, of business has a different concept under OPMA than the rest of us might think. When we think about business, it's about a transactional thing. And under OPMA, there's plenty of interesting interpretations by state auditor's office and attorney general's office and, and the courts, that even a board listening together, because they are the board, to information and not even speaking back, is doing the business of the city. So potentially a violation of the Open Public Meetings Act if it's in a private setting. My, my sense of the, of the letter was, is that both those events seem somewhat private, not open to the public. They were an invitation to the council. And certainly, I would encourage council members to go. I would also, though, to avoid any kind of violation of OPMA, is that we limit attendance to three. And so my suggestion tonight, if council were to express some interest tonight, staff would be more than happy to poll the council over the next day or so and determine who is willing and able, time-wise, to go, because we're, this is a pretty short notice, to the one or, one or the other event and coordinate that so we don't have a quorum at either event. So I wanted to invite council to feel free to utilize staff that way and just let me know what you want to do.
Well, in fact, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a pause of that. Is there interest or availability of council members to attend that? I see one, two, three, four, potentially four. So may I suggest that, so clearly, we have support. So why don't, you, if, Mr. Zabel, if you can have staff send out an email to council members. If, if we end up getting four, and really, really, all four want to go, then your counsel or suggestion would be that, at the very least, we publish it as a meeting and then also some guidelines about what we might do or what, where would you go there?
Well, I think if we, so there's two separate events. One is one day, one's another day. And so if only three are at the event, we're fine. As long as we don't have a quorum, it's not a meeting. And so what we can do is just, if there's three that want to attend one day, any, any combination of the four, as long as you don't, as long as you don't exceed four at one or the other.
Two, two meetings, so please do poll council members if we do get into any issues with quorum or the principles of open government. You would let us know that we'd need to possibly take steps, but hopefully, we'll get some mixtures of folks. Is that fair?
We'll do that, and we'll keep a flipping quarter handy in case we need to get it down to three.
Okay, sounds good. Any other, is that the ending on a good note too?
That's all I had. That was my other exciting news.
Well, and I was going to cover that, so I don't have anything else, any other council member miscellaneous discussion. Hearing none, we go on. We do have need for an executive session this evening. Council will meet in an executive session to consider acquisition of real estate. Executive sessions expected to last approximately five minutes, actually, and be attended by the city manager and only the city manager this evening, of course, council, and no action during that session. And at the conclusion, I'll reconvene the regular council session, entertain any action desired and adjourn the meeting. So if it is 8:06 now, we're going to, actually, 8:07, we're going to be in an executive session until about 8:12. in executive session until about eight twelve.